Sorry, Judge.
Two different streams.
Sure. There'll be a separate one for the workshop.
Okay, uh, the time is eleven forty-three. I now call the Burnet County Workshop Tuesday, June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five to order. The, I'm not going to introduce myself again, so we'll just jump right into the, uh, the first item is to review and discuss strategic planning for the following. Transportation planning, facilities management, and land use planning. So, um, so I've included in your packet, Commissioners, the, uh, a, uh, an example of, uh, the capital improvement plan program put together by Structure Point. That goes by CIPP or, as again, Capital Improvement Plan Proposal. I think any, anybody would, uh, understand that, uh, this county, uh, has some serious transportation challenges, uh, that, uh, we have, uh, we serve as a major hazardous, uh, chemical transport, uh, location for, um, the transportation, I guess, what do you call it? Hazardous waste route for, to bypass, uh, Austin. It's a, it's a serious risk and, and so I think we need to talk about, uh, in both capital improvements related to our roads. Commissioner Collier, I think you have like a major FM road that's, uh, starting to get a lot of pressure on the, on your east side there. And I was just looking at the map the other day. I can't believe how many subdivisions have come out there that I didn't, I didn't even know about the last time I was out there, uh, or since, since the last time I was out there, I should say. And then also the, what is it, eighteen sixty-nine kind of dumps? And there's all the subdivisions that I didn't even know were existence. So, um, I guess we need to talk about what, how we should move forward. I mean, certainly we heard this issue about the building across the street and other buildings that we're renting and, uh, but we don't really have, we have land, uh, and we have some buildings, but they're not being fully utilized. And then, and then even our spaces like the, the park, uh, that we have and then eight hundred acres of parkland that have been donated. Somebody ran up to me the other day in the coffee shop and said, I want a horse trail on that eight hundred acres. Well, you know, we haven't even, I, I know we don't have, uh, what is there? Some sort of easement on it temporarily, uh, like life estate or whatever you call it. But we need, we, we can start planning what, what our land use should be, uh, and, and other land that we may own around the county. I don't even know if there's a single inventory space. So, any, anybody want to jump in and talk about some of these issues?
Well, anybody that knows me knows that I'm big in transportation planning. And I think that having someone on board while we're going through our transportation plan update from Campo is going to be highly important. I would certainly embrace bringing American Structure Point on board to do this. And I believe that this firm, from what I've read about them, has been very successful in using, leveraging local participation dollars to achieve, uh, major projects on the Tech Dot network as well as, of course, working on our individual county roads. I think one of the things that we, we might want to consider and put it on a future agenda is discussions about doing some, uh, transportation counts on our county roads so that we know what the impacts are to our county roads on a daily basis, traffic counts.
Okay. I agree with that. I think, um, we lack planning and so in order to effectively, we probably, we're going to need some help with that too. I don't think that we can manage what we need to do over the long term ourselves. So I'd like to, I guess we're asking like in the budget process to find the money to fund it, right? Yeah, so I'm in favor of heading down that path to help, have somebody help us with all three of these areas, honestly.
I, I don't know if, if they do any facilities management or not. I, I guess you could ask them, judge if you, if they do it. But the tran, I know they do the transportation side of it. I would certainly embrace having them on board.
In a school board meeting the other day and they hired a architect firm, uh, to, to both look at their overall facilities and, and their growth and, and do a lot of the things that we've heard members of the public asking, uh, asking us to do, but, but, uh, for, for say the buildings, the, I know the school district, that's one of the things that they're taking in, you know, what is the growth? What is the likelihood of those kids, uh, bees, you know, that growth, including small children that would end up in the school, things like that, way, way beyond our, our capacity to do so. So there are firms out there, as I, as I learned in the school board meeting the other day, that, uh, that were, uh, so, and then same with land use architects, things like that. So, all right, well, uh, anything else? If, if this is a good idea, we're not making the decision today, but we'll put it on future agendas as, as, uh, as something to consider. And, uh, I've got my auditor here today, so, uh, thank you, but, uh, I know you're here for another reason, but as I remember in the, uh, you're also the, the county purchaser. So a lot of these services are not, uh, I was thinking chapter two seventy-two, the local government code actually says some of these services are not even allowed to be bid. Is that correct? Or that you could do a request for qualifications, but you don't really bid as a, as a price point? Okay, all right. I'm fairly sure that's correct, so. Uh, is there any public comment? Go ahead.
Claire Nibro, um, I'm glad that Commissioner Dockry brought up Campo because I do see that, uh, at the end of May, y'all signed a resolution that, um, that Thorough Fair Plan would be, um, updated by them at no cost to Burnet County. So my question is, how does the Thorough Fair Plan intersect with this? I mean, can you explain how the two of these work in relation to each other? I don't understand that. I need some education on that.
Speak to that or? The Camp, the Campo thing is, is it regional planning for, for how we fit into the, the six, six or eight county net, is it six counties?
Well, I believe that, that what would happen is that Campo is going to come in here and roll out the countywide maps and we're going to use, you know, the old pushpin technique saying, you know, this is a bad intersection, this needs to have a turn lane added to it, such as Twin Isles out there on fourteen thirty-one, Commissioner Luther's working on. And then what the consultant would then do is number one, work through us, through that process with us to make sure that we're not missing any points. You know, they may say, well, yeah, it needs a turn lane, but it also needs a D cell lane. So let's build all that into the plan. Now, if it's a Tech Dot roadway, I think that where the consultant comes in is they, they go to, to Tech Dot, well, they help us number one, pick all of those projects and prioritize them. And then they, it would go to Tech Dot in conjunction with us and try to figure out how to use what limited local participation dollars we have to try to secure improvements to those projects. As we have seen with the Twin Isles project, you know, by us adding a hundred thousand dollars to it, we were able to get the D cell lanes done to that, which is an important improvement to that intersection that if we were to do that on our own, it might be a million dollar project, but for a hundred thousand dollars, because we do it in conjunction with another improvement project they're doing, we're able to achieve that, uh, and maximize what little dollars we were able to put into those projects. That's what I envisioned to be.
So that's Campo, what you just said, that's Campo?
That is, that is. CIP coming in besides Campo.
That is the consultant that's, we were just talking, talking about just a minute ago, American Structure Point, working in conjunction with Campo and Burnet County. When we all sit down at the table in the public meetings and start.
So we'll have to pay for?
We would have to pay for someone to do that.
American Structure Point, but not Campo? And you don't know how much money right now that we're going to be allocating for that? That's why we're here to talk about that?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a, a price point, no.
And what exactly they're going to be doing?
Well, they'll, they'll be providing engineering services as, as he just explained. If it's, if it's Campo coming in, then it's going to be commissioners and maybe a judge just making, making comments or, 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 you know, about how that, how that plan should work. If you have somebody like this, then you have an engineering professional that's now reviewing the documents, going out, looking at additional data, gathering additional data and actually making a, a more informed, uh, push into the plan so that the plan actually is hi- higher level and functioning than just, uh, than just some of us sitting around picking, picking points of pain, so.
Will there be a public workshop perhaps on that in the future? Cause I can envision having more questions about this as it's happening.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. All right, I don't know, like I said, we're not going to do any action items, so I'll go ahead and call agenda item number two, review and discuss the tax assessor collector budget proposal. Again, this is not for decision making, it's just to for gather input. And, uh, and so we have a request for an additional position, uh, and then some additional, work to be done as well as security cameras within your offices. Hi.
I, I'd never dreamed I'd be first. Deanne Fisher.
I was like, I don't want to throw you under the bus.
Burnet County Tax Assessor Collector. Yes, I feel like I have a lot of wants on my list. The last five and a half months have been very, and, well, it's just revealed that there are some, some procedures that we need to have in place with the population growth that we keep talking about. I have some numbers for you guys. There should be one. So I was, I was curious. I knew that the volume of business had increased starting January first when the Department of Motor Vehicles did away with vehicle inspections. So I just went back to look and see what we did in twenty twenty-four and where we're at currently. So, um, on this, you'll see in twenty twenty-four, we did sixty-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-five transactions in the tax office, which was fifty, five thousand one hundred and sixty-five transactions a month, two hundred and fifty-eight daily. Currently, based on the five and a half months of information that I have, we've already done thirty-five thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven transactions, which is sixty-five hundred and fourteen transactions a month, um, resulting in three hundred and twenty-six transactions a day that we're doing. And, um, you know, it's the same, we've, we've had seven clerks since twenty twenty-two. The tax office has not added anyone. So just to narrow it down, we're basically doing one thousand three hundred and forty-nine more transactions a month currently, which equals out to sixty-eight daily transactions with the same number of, of clerks. We did just get two more state computers installed, so that gives us five state computers in each location. I'm requesting an assistant chief deputy due to the fact I currently have two chiefs, one in each office. Due to the cash controls that we have in place, only myself and my chiefs can access the cash in the safe, the cash drawers. So with that being said, if I have one person out or say myself and a chief are gone to a meeting, it leaves us in a bind that I don't really have anyone else that can step into that responsibility. So, um, that's, that's my biggest ask is that I'm asking for another person. And then you will see on my budget, my travel and mileage, mileage has gone up significant. I've requested more money, um, due to the fact that my predecessor lived in Marble Falls. That enabled her to pick up their cash deposit daily and bring it to Burnet. And I don't, I don't live in Burnet, I live in Bertram, so I'm at the complete opposite end of the county. So how I've been getting the deposit back and forth is I'm having to pay one of my clerks that lives in the middle, she swings through Marbles, Marble Falls, clogs in, gets the deposit and brings it to me. So, and then we also have the issue of getting titles back and forth and license plates. So I'm paying my staff mileage to get things from point A to point B if I'm not able to do it myself. So that's why that increased. And then, um, under education conferences, um, I have increased that significantly. I have a chief deputy that's been with the county for twenty-eight years. Friday is her last day. She's been a chief deputy for seventeen years, so I'm, I'm losing a significant amount of knowledge, um, on this Friday. So my other chief deputy has been with the DM, with the tax office for five years. My staff is in significant need of training and knowledge with all the new tax laws and changes that have come down from the state level. We have, um, another reason why I'm needing another clerk is the state passed House Bill seven eighteen, which basically is now making all of the dealers, all the dealerships have to get on web dealer and they will have to submit their title applications online. And with that being said, I'm, I'm going to have to designate a person that sits behind a computer screen and approves every dealer transaction online, collect the money, issue the tags and the plates. Well, they'll actually issue the plates, but, um, it sounds very easy, but there's a lot of back and forth. If they didn't get their title work correct, we have to bounce it back to them. You'll also see on my budget request, cabinetry material. As Judge Wilson stated, the building at seventeen oh one, we, we have some challenges. It was not built out to, um, basically have the traffic that we have coming in and out. And so in that particular office, we have a counter space that's equal to about, I don't know, thirty-six inches, forty inches, if I'm being generous, and that is the only counter space we have. So when I have a clerk that walks up, and we have two stations, so when I have a clerk walk up, the cash drawers pop open and the girls can't get to their, their cash drawers. And it's just, it's a bad setup. So the most economical thing to do would be to just move the cash drawers to the side so that we can utilize that as a true walk-up counter. So I did have James Bailey come and look at it and he said the materials, he said estimate eighteen hundred and he can, he can provide the labor. And then, um, the other increase would be just my, on my operation, um, I inherited an office that had a lot of really tired, tired equipment, like the chairs literally had plywood and foam and that was at the Burnet location. Now my Marble location, they have broken chairs over there. So I've put money in for chairs next fiscal buzzet, budget in Marble Falls as well as, some big items such as we need a, a money counter. I don't want to reveal how much money we take in, but, you know, a lot of people pay in cash and so with the counterfeit issues that go on and just the volume of cash that we deal in, I think it would be worthwhile to buy the equipment to count it and make sure we're, we're covered. And then as far as cameras, I know that's, that's a big want. I was not prepared when I took my oath on January one, I'm just going to be honest, for the angry people that we get in our office. They're not happy with the state comptroller or the DMV and we're literally the messenger, but unfortunately we get their frustrations. And so we've had a couple of situations where, um, you know, I've had to go out and diffuse the situation and luckily I was able to, but there's going to come a day that I can't. And the way our office is built, both locations, it's not easy to get out the front door and get down the hallway to get the bailiff. So, um, again, I know I have a lot of wants and I, and ask, and I know that we have limited funds, but I would just be grateful if you would take it into consideration. Any questions?
Can I ask a question? Do you say in the first rule, you know, what is the, what is the total for the six transactions? What is the population of transaction?
It's transaction. I believe it's for every eleven thousand five hundred transactions. I'll have to look it up, but I believe it's like right at eleven thousand. Transactions per year, they allocate a free terminal. Well, we just got two more, we have ten total, so I don't really have room for anymore. So, um, until we address the space issue, I think, I, I maybe could squeeze one more in, but yeah, we're.
Second floor of our office.
Yeah, we're getting very creative. Like I, my next step is I'll give my office up, but the problem is, um, there's, there's not really much traffic flow into my office. If you've ever been in this Burnet location, it's pretty, pretty small, so we'll just work with what we have. Anything else?
Good job.
Okay. Thanks for picking on the new girl.
I, I have no idea how this order got picked. You might've been the most efficient, turned it in early. Okay, uh, for the treas, treasures, uh, from the freshman to the veteran.
Good afternoon. Oh, I was going to say good morning, but we're well past that. My budget request is the same. Oh, sorry, Carrie Crownover, um, county treasurer. I'm not asking for an increase in anything. The only thing that is really going to change in my budget this year is a decrease in the longevity, since I lost my, um, de, chief deputy clerk, um, this year and I have new staff, so the longevity has decreased. I did leave the request for five hundred dollars in overtime in there just because we have almost exceeded that already with time restraints for bill processing and payroll. The way that it falls, we can't flex that timeout, so. Other than that, everything has stayed the same and I don't need any additional stuff right now.
Are there any questions?
Easy peasy, thanks.
All right, county auditor. Apologize, this is not a reflection of the county auditor's budget, I don't know what.
I brought copies because I don't think you have the right.
Thank you.
Kelly Glazer, interim, interim auditor. My current budget in twenty-five, um, was one point two. I'm asking for one point three. Most of the one point three has to do with an internal auditor. And if you look at page four, it has the explanation for the auditor. In, I want to say in March, we had a part-time internal auditor hired and then within six weeks they left to go back to, um, another department. We need this position because we are not right now functioning, um, in doing all of our required internal audits. We started doing internal audits, we got through two and we're not going to make it through probably anymore this year. However, we have statutory requirements where we audit the treasurer's office and, uh, the tax assessor and the jail. The tax assessor and the, um, and the treasurer were supposed to do quarterly and then the jail were supposed to do annually. We, next court, I'm going to present the, um, internal audit that we did on the jail for inmate trust and commissary. So that's basically why I'm requesting this position. And then there's, there's a couple of other increases just because costs are going up with printing and, um,
On the part-time assistant auditor, it says funds used by full-time, so that'll go away and you'll just add it to the full-time?
Yes.
Do you want me to need the part-time anymore?
No. And then I, I had a couple of other questions.
Sure, go ahead.
On the, uh, you may not have had time to look at this since you just got this. On the output measures and the outcome measures, are we going to talk about those today?
Yeah, I mean, we can't, uh, I'm sorry, it didn't come up on the other ones, but like check processing, it says, it says eleven thousand dollars, but I think that means eleven thousand total.
Thousand, yes, yes.
And then fifty-five thousand dollars.
Fifty-five million is what we.
I'm sorry, fifty-five million in payroll transactions.
In the cash.
So that's just raw input, uh, and then, and then, yeah, I like the one that you chose for, uh, outcome measures because meeting the requirements of the Prompt Payment Act is basically what you're stating there, right?
Right.
Is, is if we end up with a penalty, then we know that somebody can get, get paid on time. Okay.
I just wanted to make sure that those would work for, for this year.
Sure, this, this is a good start, good, good standing point, so.
And then the only other, other question I had was, um, on the salaries. I didn't increase anything on the salaries. Are we going to talk about that today or are we going to?
Not today. I think we'll, we'll have to figure out, uh, that's right, we'll probably have a work, a specific workshop on salaries and, you know, whether it's the steps or the, what do you call it?
Great.
cola or the steps or whatever.
Okay. That's, that's all I had. Did y'all have any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Agrile. Should I call him? I'm sorry, let me, let me go back.
Denied.
Okay.
So, all right. So this is, uh, agenda item number five, review and discuss agrive, agrile extension, extension services, budget proposal for FY twenty-five, twenty-six.
Hello, good, good afternoon. I almost said morning too. Kelly Tarla, Texas A&amp;M Agrileaf Extension Agent. Um, I apologize for my voice. I, we can do, discuss the salaries, I guess, in another workshop, but it's nothing crazy, it's just to get us kind of up to, um, other, other agents in the area and, and then to meet the job responsibilities and also, um, with the admin assistant to getting her moved up the step, but that's not a big deal. The one thing I am asking for, the two things I'm asking for is operating supplies from seventeen hundred and fifty to twenty-five hundred. And that is because we have added that third agent, the, um, four H agent, even though we've had that position for three and a half years now, um, we had a vacancy for a while and this will also get us on a four-year rotation for technology. So we have four people in the, in the office, three agents and one admin assistant and then we can all get new technology or new computers every four years and get us on a good rotation. So that would, uh, help us in that because currently, like my computer's seven years old and it's just because I haven't gotten, because we added that position and then that person needed a computer, so we just need to get on a good, solid, um, technology rotation. The other request is vehicle repair and maintenance from a thousand to twenty-five hundred. That's because I ran into a little incident this October, um, right after the budget year came into play and had an accident on the way to a four H contest. And I learned that our deductible is twenty-five hundred dollars. So now I've gone this whole year kind of hanging on, making sure I don't run into issues with tires and oil changes and all the things. And, um, so that I can kind of limp along and then once I get that done, I can, I can get it fixed because the repairs don't quite meet the, the deductible. So I just didn't want to run into an issue where I spent my money, my thousand dollars, which was going to be nine hundred and eighty-six dollars, I think it was a repair bill. I didn't want to spend that money in October and then not have enough money to even get my oil changed the rest of the year. So, um, I am requesting that to twenty-five hundred just to meet that deductible. And that's it.
Kelly, last year, year before, you increased travel or housing or something, I remember?
Travel.
That all worked out, like, still a good amount?
It is like a charm. It's, it's really doing, it's, it's doing great things. I'm going to explain this because out of county travel, we did increase that, uh, a couple of years ago, but we have three agents and that's why we increased it because we went from two agents to three agents. So we added that four H position. So having this money and it has, it has helped us with like, um, we're not having to stay with, you know, uh, cranky, you know, aunts and uncles during stock show season and walking in and out of their house. cranky, you know, aunts and uncles during stock show season and walking in and out of their house at 4:30 and 5:00 in the morning and nine and 10 o'clock at night. So it's kind of saved us from that. It's also allowed those two younger agents, Colton is a 4-H agent, and now Mia, who we're so excited to have. She is, she's, she's good. That has allowed them to travel for trainings. So we're probably always gonna have extra trainings, especially like now with some screw worm stuff coming up. I'm probably gonna be called out a little bit on some more trainings, especially on South Texas when we start opening this facility. I'll probably spend a little time down there. So, so that travel has definitely helped us with that.
I just, I think that your vehicle repair and maintenance might be a problem. I think it's really low at 2,500. I mean, that's not a set of tires, that's not, I mean.
No, I mean, $1,000, I can't even get new tires for $1,000.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying. I think, I think that number needs to be bumped some on the vehicle repair and maintenance.
That's just for the deductible. On a normal year, when I don't hit a deer at 4:37 in the morning going to National Oil Contest, I probably would be able to do that. But that, but this year, you know, traveling to that National Oil Contest, you know, I just needed the deductible met. And that's really, if I could have done that, I would have had, I would have had money to spend. And then, I would have had money for oil and.
I just, I just think it ought to be increased, but anyway, that's my.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not gonna argue with that.
And in the future, when you hit a deer at 4:00 in the morning, let, let us know so we can see if the county can provide additional resources.
Well, I mean, I had to report it.
I understand, but I'm just saying, I guess.
Do all that kind of stuff.
You can make a request to the Commissioners' Court to cover your deductible, get your car fixed, so that you can carry the kids.
Well, I think we're gonna switch, I think we're able to now move some. I think there's gonna be a little bit of line item transfer we can do with that and then get that fixed in the week, next week or two.
So just wanna clarify one thing. On your computers, you're not, you're not in, in the county refresh program, because you're a state agency within the county.
We're a state agency, yes.
Just wanted to clarify that.
And so, we have a cost share program with Agrile, or with Texas A&amp;M.
Got it.
We have a cost share program.
Okay, thank you. Elections? Oh, wait, let me go back to this. Is there any public comment first on that issue? Okay, I'm gonna call, review and discuss the Elections Department Budget Proposal for FY '25, '26.
Item Six.
Item Six, Agenda Item Six.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Go ahead and state your name for the record.
This is, oh, I'm sorry, Doug Ferguson, Burnet County Elections Administrator. And most of my budget is either not changing or is actually going down. I'm lowering my contract labor down to 85,000, based on calculations of the four elections that we'll have coming up. My support and licensing fees have gone down from 90,000 with the purchase of the new equipment and the new poll books, down to 72,187. And everything else stayed the same, except for, on my line 240, my, my support staff and clerk, I'm asking for three months of EA salary for the months of October, November, and December, when I'm hoping to have a person that we hire overlap with me until the end of the year when I retire, so that they can be, go through an entire election, be trained and be ready to actually face the music in, in 2026 by themselves. I'm asking for that person to start actually at the beginning of September, but I have line item. I'm sorry, I'll be doing a line item transfer out of my contract labor to cover that person's salary for that one month. So I've consulted with both the HR Department and also with Kelly, and that was the, the advice that I got for how to take care of all of that, so. So the major thing I'm really asking for is the, the overlap. And I've figured that on, just on my salary for the, all of the pay periods that will happen during October, November, December. I don't know what the court will decide to bring in a new person, at what salary. So this, this is based on my salary, just so you know. And that's basically all that I'm asking for.
Okay.
Questions?
Questions or comments? As far as performance measures, did you do anything, put anything together on that?
I did. I didn't know if you wanted me to talk about that or not. Oh, I did also fill out a, a new person's request for that overlap period.
Got it, thank you.
Yeah, our major accomplishments for '25, I don't know if you wanna talk about that, but we upgraded to new electronic poll books for the November '24 election. And that enabled our polling locations to provide curbside services with the same exact procedure, which was law. And so, it brought us up to be compliant with that. And we voted a record-breaking November election, voting 28,403. We have around 39,000 voters. So November was a, was the biggest election we've ever had in Burnet County, as most of you probably felt when you were voting. And our partial manual count verified that that election was accurate, which was great. And we were trained and facilitated the replacement of our voter registration database, based on our previous company practically going out of business and giving us a bill for extra, they wanted extra money that wasn't in our contract. So we were kind of forced last summer to make some changes, and that was when we got our poll books. We changed that, and we also signed up for our new voter registration database, which they began in January. And we've been learning, you know, training and have been successful using it. And we're able to go through our May election, you know, using that, and everything worked great. And of course, we replaced our 20-year-old voting system with new equipment and held our first successful election using the new equipment for the school elections in May. It made us compliant with the new law, requiring voter-verified paper document voting system by September '26, so. Our goal for '26, we're gonna hold four elections. This is for fiscal year '26, so that includes this November election. And the March primary, the May 2026 City School, and the May primary runoff elections. Those are all going to be in fiscal year '26. And the second goal is that each election is, is successful with no contests, no, no problems. We'll be working with both party chairs this next, yeah, next summer. I'm trying to think of what year this is. To hire, train, and schedule all the poll workers for the upcoming elections, we will be appointing all judges and alternate judges next summer for two-year terms. That's the time that we do that again, and we'll reappoint ballot board and all that kind of stuff. So that's, that's a big part that we'll be taking with our party chairs to, to achieve.
I think that's good, Doug. Appreciate the input, and then I'll work with you on the performance measures. I think your, your main outcome goal is, should be probably whether the election gets overturned. And then, I mean, the result gets overturned, that should be, as long as, that should be zero.
Right.
It's based on the machines and then the actual paper ballots. And then, anyway, and then the number of elections held and the number of, you know, we'll work out, I guess, an alternative. All right.
Okay.
Is there any public comment? Okay, yes, ma'am.
Listen to Stafford County Clerk. I just wanna make sure, just because you formally have said that, that we figure out the process we're gonna tackle when we get to the appointment. Because that, the resignation goes to the Election Commission, not the Commissioners' Court.
I think we're just doing the budget review.
Right, I just wanna make sure we're not gonna be able to point to, I know the funding is gonna be for two administrators. So we're gonna have to make sure we're not, we can only have one.
I see.
And you're gonna, we're gonna have to figure out if he's gonna become not the administrator and just be staff, or the new person is going to become the, just a staff member, and then they're gonna then come for appointments. So there is some fine things. I just wanna make sure we don't forget those things.
Okay, good, thank you. Yeah, that's all. Thank you. Okay, HR? Another Agenda, is it? Agenda Item Number Seven, Review and Discuss the Human Resources Department's Budget Proposal for Fiscal Year '25, '26.
Shirley Bullard, Human Resources. I too am not asking for any change in my budget, with the exception of another computer. I intend to replace my part-time person fiscal year '26, '25, '26. And the computer went away whenever she resigned, and so we need a replacement back in the office. Again, I'm not asking for any changes in the budget, because last year was 301, and that's what we need. We didn't spend all of that, so we're okay. And as far as output measures, trying to stay ahead of everything, trying to keep policies updated, reviewed. We, we're in the process of all the new healthy counties things, trying to get our employee population a little healthier, giving them resources, things to work on. And just employee services, what we do in HR is try to have happy employees. Goals are to increase our trainings. We didn't do any trainings this past year, we didn't have time. But as things have come more congealed in that department, we'll be able to take off some and do some trainings. And also, what we would like to do is to really implement a real onboarding process, where when our employees come in, we don't give them a whole load of information, but they're not gonna remember 30 minutes from now. And that's gonna eliminate a whole lot of phone calls, because then they call and ask us every question that we could be addressing, you know, after they've been here and settled in for a couple of weeks. That's it.
Any questions?
I'll just make the comment that historically, when you've got something as small as, as a computer, if she's in need of that at this time, might be something that we could do within this budget, and then, you know, it won't affect your future budget.
Right. That's, that's correct. Talked to IT about that in a few minutes, so. All right, thank you, Shirley. All right. The Review and Discuss, Review and Discuss Indigent Healthcare Department Budget Proposal for FY '25, '26. Carol, are you still here? Carol? You're up. Go ahead and state your name.
I don't have a lot of changes.
Go ahead and state your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Carol Ellis, Indigent Healthcare Administrator for Burnet County.
Okay.
I don't have a lot of changes to my budget. We, we operate very, very successfully under what we have, and usually below, below what we have. I don't have the information from last year about exactly what our expenses were on the, on the medical side. All I have that I, that I received was just our administrative numbers. And those all seem, seem fine. I thought maybe about reducing our, our training and travel mileage. Unless something happens, then we have to retrain somebody for my job. Well, the, the training is, is pretty negligible. I do, I have been attending some conferences in the past that, that affect the travel and the training, but those are fairly, fairly, fairly minimal. And, and the training, a lot of the training, especially the software, is done by tele, by the internet. So, so that helps a lot on that, on that budget. On the medical side, in the past, since, since it was, the Indigent Healthcare now reports to the auditor rather than the county judge, the auditor has really been in charge and has always submitted the budget. So this is the first time since I have been reporting to the auditor that I have seen the budget. So I'm not real familiar how some of the, the numbers were intended to, but they seem fine. I do know that on the medical side, the county is committed to 8% of our GRTL for the, for the, on, on the medical side. We have never reached that 8%. We always operate between two, and I think 3% is the very height of our, of our budget. Maybe 3% we've reached of that. Right now, we're at .04% of the medical budget. The, at, at one time, we had between 28 and 32 applicants that we were actually, and that's when, that's when we reached our highest percent. Right now, I have had a slight uptick in the number of clients. The last couple of three years, we were running between 10 and 14 clients, active clients. I'm currently at 19 applicants with several pending. So I have seen a slight uptake in, in the number of clients that I am servicing right now. But other than that, the budget looks so fine, and I didn't recommend any significant changes, one way or the other.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? All right, thank you, Carol. Appreciate it. Call, Review and Discuss Technology Department Budget Proposal for FY '25, '26, Agenda Item Number Nine.
Afternoon, everyone. Commissioners, stewards. My name is Greg Harris. I am just newly, newly hired here for Burnet County as the Director of Technology and Cyber Security. I started last week, so there are a lot of things for me to dive into, but just on a high level. The current budget for 2025 was 1.2. There's been a, a small increase for the request for 2026 to 1.6 north of that, due to various things. One is my position, and the increase in the professional services for some projects that had already been on the books that needs to be completed. Very important projects dealing with our infrastructure, our security posture, and being able to move to the more secure enterprise solutions that will allow us to better serve the county as they better serve the constituents. We've had increase in some of the equipment. We are currently on schedule to do half of the county in a project called Switch Refresh. But as always, you know, we're looking to be able to serve the rest of the county offices to ensure that we are all in one backbone and we're not hodgepodge. Some of the tech, the topology has been done randomly, which has caused us a, a problem with being able to have, you know, enterprise security messaging fall over and things of that nature. So we're trying to correct those things. Training, we do have a very good staff that I've been able to meet over the week. They are working diligently. However, there are some opportunities for them to increase their knowledge for where we're going in the future. We won't have a staff increase to the degree, you know, that we are running our own systems by ourselves, but we want to ensure that we are very diligent and adherent to the people's fund and that they are managing the consultants that are working to partner with us to be successful for the county. Some of the licensing fees, obviously, there are increase... Increase... Increases in those licensing fees. We also have an increase that's gonna be yearly for like Tyler Technology that we have to account for. Some of our, you know, outcome measures, we are looking to install what we call service level agreements, you know, with the county. So, per department on how we respond, you know, how quickly do we respond? Understanding is that response adequate? Surveys to that effort to ensure that we are hearing, you know, feedback from, you know, from Burnet County as to how we're doing so that we can continue to improve. We are looking at tallying it up the averted attacks that we receive from a cybersecurity perspective. The posture that we currently have will be improved as we move to more of a dot gov situation. There is hardening in the posture for Burnet County that would allow us to protect the data, citizen data and the county's data. We're also looking for, you know, how are we doing on projects? Is it on time, on budget? Is it on schedule? Right? So, having those employees have the training necessary to understand management of particular items within a project and to help hold, you know, the consultants accountable for that. We're also wanting to ensure that we have fall over. Right now, we do have a serious concern of, you know, if something goes wrong, you know, are we still gonna be able to function as a county? And those are things that I have to dive into. Once again, you know, I've been here over a week, but we are definitely looking forward to improving our posture. So, just in a nutshell, I guess in those eight, nine days that I've been here, this is what I've been able to come up with and this is why the budget is increasing. We would next time have a lot more details as we move forward in this strategy.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you. Very in-depth for a week on the job.
Thank you.
Commissioners, do you want to continue and see if we can get through? Or do you want to set aside?
I'd say continue, maybe with a short break.
You want to do a break now or?
That'd be good for me.
All right. Let's take a five-minute break, please. The time is now twelve-thirty-six. We're taking a five-minute break.
And we're staying upstairs?
Yes.
Do we have relinquish his court right?
No.
I spoke with Cody Jensen and he's gonna go downstairs. So, we're able to stay upstairs for a while.
You got any meat sticks? I don't have any meat sticks. I've got your hella bars and I've got sweet and salty. I was delusional. Do you want me to still call?
It'd be kinda rude for us.
It's okay. Okay. Time is now twelve-forty-two. We'll recall the meeting. Call agenda item number ten. Review and discuss the facilities and maintenance department's budget proposal for FY 25-26.
Hello, my name is Richard Gumbert. I'm the maintenance supervisor for the facilities and the grounds. I'm actually asking for a substantial increase. We... Since October, we've had... I'm asking for a new position, an additional HVAC experience technician. We've had forty-four major AC breakdowns this year. And just to kinda give you an idea of some of... Of why we're repairing ACs instead of... Some of them are planned for replacement, like this courthouse is... That's part of the budget that I'm asking for money to replace these units. They're fifteen years old. It's time to replace those. But what we've had some that were under warranty, even that we've had to repair all the way to some that are, you know, five, ten years old. And I've got one... I've got one AC technician. And then I've got two, three other guys that are experienced with AC. But I need... I need one more person in addition to that. I'll keep all these other guys. They're all busy. They jump in and help when they can. So, I've got... I've really got like three different sections in my department now. I've got a maintenance construction team that consists of a maintenance supervisor slash carpenter, construction expert. And then his... He's got a helper and then a part-time from ISF that's non-skilled. And then we have our regular maintenance, which consists of an assistant maintenance supervisor and three... Because my memory's bad, I wrote this down. Four maintenance technicians under him. That's in... Zachary is the assistant. He's a... An AC tech slash... He's an AC contractor. And then the other... I got two of them that are certified to handle refrigerant. The other two are not. So, based on what I'm looking at, I mean, we've been... If we... If we were able to get on these... The roofs and take a look and do a little more preventative maintenance on them, we... I think we can cut back on some of these repairs and save us some money. But in order to do that, I need somebody that's skilled to get up there and actually look at these and do the preventative maintenance that I have in place. So, that's for that. And then I'm...
Just a question, Rich. When you... So, you would post that position to have those credentials when it came out?
Yes, I would like to. Yes, that would be what I would look for. They... Depending on their experience, you know, may not require them to have a technician license, but you know, because they may come from another maintenance department where they've got the skill set to do what I'm looking for them to do. And then I'm asking for three additional trucks. Not additional, three replacement trucks. One of them would be actually for this new position. But in the past, we've taken used vehicles and tried... You know, we've had some success with them. Sometimes we don't. But we're just about to the point where we've got them all, all those used vehicles out. The maintenance on those is getting a little higher than what we want to. And we really don't... For us, we really not... We don't look at the mileage. We look at how well this vehicle holds up. And if it's something going on with it, we get it to a mechanic and then they advise us on what we should do from there. So, let me... Okay, that's that. On the buildings, I wanted to talk about that too. We're... Just to kinda give you an example, I started fifteen years ago. We had like fourteen buildings that we... That maintenance was responsible for doing the maintenance on. I county owned more, but now we're up to twenty-eight that the maintenance department takes care of. And I... Those are gonna be like at the sheriff's department. You got the sheriff's building and then you have that little building on the back. So, I count that as two. So, as you're going through this in your head and going, you know, where's he coming up with twenty-eight? I can... I can sit down with you and show them. That's the maintenance technician. That's the trucks. We need a new mower. We inherited a mower from the jail. They were gonna just auction it because again, we take those things and we try to get some more life out of them. And it's getting... The one that we have, it's... It works, but we use it to mow the courthouse lawn and the... Actually, we don't use that one over there. And we use it around the county when ISF or community service can't help us out. What the mower that I'm looking at, I want to get a little bit smaller so it's easier to use on these lawns. And that's a sixty-five hundred dollar purchase.
So, I guess I didn't get all of your information in this package. So, I'm gonna just go ahead. I think that you've got about a ten, ten or fifteen percent increase. We'll look at some more of your items later. I see already how it fits into a bigger scheme of decisions that need to be vetted on buildings. So, probably have to ask you to come back and talk about that at a later time for additional details.
Okay, so what?
Okay. So, thank you. Any questions, commissioners? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
You need to... That sheet, whatever he was talking about there with the trucks and the mower and all.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I'm thinking that I don't have the full packet in mind. I certainly didn't give that to you. So, because of that, I think maybe we should set it aside.
Okay.
Is Herb still here? Okay, he's hiding over there. All right, let me call the agenda item. Oh, was there any public comment on the...
Facilities and maintenance.
Maintenance, facilities and maintenance, okay. I'm gonna call agenda item number twelve... Oh, sorry, eleven. Review and discuss the Environmental Development Services budget proposal for fiscal year 25-26.
Afternoon, gentlemen. Herb Darling, Burnet County Development Services. I'm not anticipating any budget change over the last years. We did have a licensing, a software licensing, possible fee increase, but we negotiated with the vendor, kept that down. We operate pretty well within what we always do. It's... We're stable. We're very stable in what we do. We've cross-trained the people in our office. When someone's out sick or on vacation, they're able to handle their duties. Given that, if it's possible for the court to find a culler for the employees this year, it would be muchly appreciated.
Thank you. Any questions?
I guess my question is, if that building gets done and you move over, let's assume you take your furniture or don't. Either way, we're gonna have offices that need furniture. Do we have a plan to replace the... Like if other offices are gonna spread out in his existing spot? We need to make sure we're budgeting for that furniture?
For next year or this year? I mean, I guess, yeah.
It might not be finished by now.
Well, I'm just saying, at some point, we're...
Yeah.
He'll need new or they'll need new or whatever, but...
Yeah, just buy new for him and leave the old furniture there.
Right, no, I...
I've had mine since I've been here. I would like to keep it until I...
I was gonna bet he wanted his. That's why I was...
Well, that's because he's got his name etched in it.
Got the old filing cabinets.
I know where everything's at.
He doesn't want empty those filing cabinets. Those date back. Anyway, just...
Need to be considered.
Thank you for the opportunity, Commissioner.
All right, thank you. Any public comment? All right. Review and discuss the following library budgets proposals for FY 25-26, General Library System Fund, Friends of the Library and Herman Brown Library. Free library. Free Library.
Hello, Florence Reeves, Director of the Herman Brown Free Library here in Burnet.
Amanda Rose, Director of Marble Falls and Spice Wood.
Mary Seaman, Director of Bertram and Ocala Library.
We'll put it in the middle, we'll resist the urge to sing. Okay, so, I guess since I'm the one in the middle, I will do a brief overview and then let the other ladies have their turn. Okay, so our library system consists of five libraries stretched out across the county, with our branches being the primary and largest branches. And as far as increases go with operating, we're not really asking much of an increase there, and then things like telephone and utilities, we've tried to calculate these the best we can, and also include any kind of unforeseen percentages for inflation. In the case of the Herman Brown Library, you may notice it is budgeted a little lower. That has to do with the fact that we are part of the county's telephone system, so we don't have that additional telephone bill. And then also, we do get credits from the city of Burnet. We are asking for a slight increase in our travel budget. What this allows us to do is to transport items in between branches. This is a very valuable service we provide to our library patrons. If there is someone in Marble Falls or Spice Wood who needs a book that's out at Ocala, instead of driving out to Ocala, we will have the book sent to them. This is done by staff members on a weekly basis, we divide it up, so it's not wear and tear on any one person's vehicle. Conference and dues, with this one, we have budgeted as best we can with information that has been given us. This is primarily for the Texas Library Association, which provides all kinds of support for us, including professional insurance. And then within our support fees, again, we are adding in those increases for our systems that we really have no control over, that are inflationary due to what these companies charge. These are things like our automated circulation system, which allows us not only to keep up with circulation, but to catalog our items so we know where everything is, as well as things such as our digital services and then our public access to computers and mobile printing. And I will not go into everything, but if y'all have questions, just let me know. And with that, before we dive into the increases we're asking as far as staffing goes, I do want to mention with my library, and then I'll let Mary speak for the Bertram Library, we are county-owned buildings, and there are some maintenance issues that need to be taken into consideration. I don't know if these are things that you would consider part of the library budget, or if these need to be considered part of the maintenance budget. In the case of my building, I am asking for annual carpet cleaning to be done. We get a lot of foot traffic, I mean, a lot. We had, looking at my little spreadsheet here.
What does a carpet cleaning cost?
It costs right under a thousand dollars. And the guy we have been using is One Star Chem Dry, and I've been really impressed with him when he did it two years ago. The carpets were so bad, his professional integrity would not allow one pass, he came back and did a second pass free of charge, so I would like to continue with his services. But last year, we had over seventy thousand visits just to the Herman Brown Library. That carpet gets nasty. The other thing I would like to ask is for a, an assessment of the overall building needs. This building's almost fifty years old. We have, we have rot, we have water damage, we have mold that is growing due to the persistent roof leaks, and I know y'all are addressing the roof leaks, and I greatly appreciate that. But just especially with these recent rains we've had, we've lost some more books, so it's, there are, there are bigger needs than I could present, I think it needs a more detailed assessment. And so, Mary, you wanna talk about your building?
I can, I can go.
Oh, okay. All right. So, for my branch, I am requesting an additional full-time position. Not a new position per se, but to take one of my current part-timers and to make them full-time. To facilitate this, I am willing to offer what is currently budgeted for this twenty-nine hour a week part-time position to make up the bulk of the, the bulk of the salary. So that should help make it a little more cost-effective for this position to go from part-time to full-time. We all know about how the county is growing, and people love their libraries. A library that is thriving is a sign of a community that is thriving, and we are getting busier and busier. We have needed another full-time position for quite some time to help with this. I'm also requesting that my remaining part-time positions actually be given a pay group. The library system's just kind of like stuck at the bottom of the pay scale, and it is harder for them to get merit raises. If somebody comes in with experience, such as my current genealogy librarian who holds a master's degree, I cannot pay her what she is competitively worth. I have to start her at the bottom of the totem pole. And it also takes longer for library, library part-timers to get up to what would be considered competitive to pay, and so we would like for them to be considered with the rest of the county part-timers and actually be in a pay group. So, that's me for now.
And to follow up on the part-time, the group we're talking about is Group Fifty-Eight, is where our full-time library techs are, and so we're just asking that those part-time employees who do the same, have the same types of responsibilities that the full-time library techs, be considered into that Group Fifty-Eight category. And so we've calculated that in on our part-time people. And for the Spice Wood Library, their Friends group is fundraising, and we're hoping to get started on that building very soon. And with that square footage growing, we also want to grow the hours that it's open, and that means more staff time. And so I would, I'm requesting that as we open up more hours to the public, and we get a few more hours for our part-timers there, we also have computers there that are, well, we run library software over there, and we don't have county computers, but we need some county computers. They're running on old computers right now that are outdated, and they, I would also like to request that Spice Wood Library get IT support, so we can keep them up to date and secure. Let's see, I think that that is it on my highlight.
To piggyback on staffing, one of my needs is that my assistant director is also my children's librarian, so she does do two jobs, two roles, as other libraries have an assistant director and a children's librarian separate. So this is kind of one step in that direction of splitting those two positions, so I'm asking for one of my, well, both of my staff, part-time staff to be increased, but one is a significant increase due to that step. So I'm not asking right away for that full-time, but trying to take the appropriate steps to make sure that all my staff are not overworked, as well as giving them the fair chance of having the pay that they deserve, being in that Group Fifty-Eight. We did ask for some new equipment. We would like to be where we need to be when it comes to technology. We have, our current cash terminals are very, very old, they do not even offer credit card options, and so for us to better serve our patrons and also generate more revenue, we are asking for equipment that offers multiple paying options. I have that quote in there for you, but I'm mentioning it because it is significant. So if you do have any questions on that, let me know. And that's just the vendor's quote, so it's kind of out of my hands. I did ask for a request, and it's not necessarily just for my department, but for all departments, that part-time have an option for leave. I did give you three models for that, to be competitive with surrounding counties. Williamson County offers part-time leave that is based off of their longevity, how long they've been in the county, and so a certain amount of time, they get a certain amount of hours leave. There's also the option of just a general twelve, sixteen hours every year of leave. That can be very hard on some departments though, because they may not work as much, as well as maybe even doing just, they get paid off during holidays, but again, some departments are not closed all holidays. So, that's just a request. I don't have some of the specific numbers, I can work with HR, but I know you're gonna have a separate workshop possibly on part-time staffing, hours, that kind of stuff, so I can also attend that as well. Do y'all have any, any questions?
Your building?
Yes, mine, I was asking for re-carpeting as well as tenting. I did work with maintenance, and they're including that in their budget as well. Tenting is mainly for the protection of our books. We have, our building faces the west and east, and so we get direct sunlight pretty much most of the day, and so especially on the east side, it faces, it faces our children's library area, and so a lot of those books are actually fading from the direct sunlight. So we're just asking, and it's more economical to keep the electricity bill down, because we have a very large building that is very tall, and so it generates a lot of electric, electric costs, so those are my requests for my building.
Some other things of note from my side of things, getting to work with these ladies more in the past year. The fact that the library has this side scale of staffing, they want to move to the county scale, I'm, I'm in support of that, but I don't even know where that other scale came from, but I know we're gonna talk about that later, I'm just saying. But then the other thing is, just in the notes, an email to David Vaughn, he's gonna increase the utility credits for the Herman Brown Library and their donation, like they did five thousand, he's gonna go to seventy-five hundred, so I could put that in the notes, that she'll have that, and it won't be restricted.
And then we did create an outcome, we included it in your table as well, but we kind of went a little above and made our own infograph for you, but these are ways that we can continue to track our output, how we're serving our community. We do keep regular stats on a regular basis for annual report, we have to legally report to the state library, so we do constantly keep track of how we're serving and how we can better serve, but these are ways, yes, that are written down, how we can keep track of how we are serving. Do y'all have any questions on those? Okay, okay. Thank y'all, and thank you for letting us be part of this workshop.
You bet, have a great day. Is there any public comment? Sure.
The only comment I have is that last year in the budget process, I think there was a request for, maybe from the district clerk, going for courier kinds of services from North County to South County, and then I hear the library saying similar kinds of courier things, and it's just, it's just something maybe needs to be factored in, there must be documents and such, along with the books.
And cash. Thank you very much. I call agenda item number thirteen, review and discuss emergency management services, including Western Regional Radios budget proposal for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Good afternoon, Derek Marchio, Burnet County Office of Emergency Management, Emergency Management Coordinator. So-
Been a long meeting, just through-
It's been a long day. So, really the biggest thing I'm asking probably for, for the next year is, of course, after really going over our paging repeater system, it is in major need of upgrade. Most of the components are as old as, it's my adult life. So a lot of those, some of those, some of that equipment was installed back in, you know, early two thousands, between two thousand five and two thousand eight. It's gone beyond its service life, and it's gonna start failing if it hasn't already failed. Council Creek is a good example of that. That tower is already, you know, part of that repeater has already failed, with the replacement part costing just about as much as replacing the entire repeater setup. So, with that, of course, you know, asking basically to put these on a replacement plan over the next, over the next five years or so, trying to replace two, two repeaters up front, and then hopefully doing one by the end of this year, with funding that's available elsewhere in the, in the county's budget. But, so basically, kind of thinking, because it was also an upgrade, when these sites were engineered, they were really kind of ill-fought out. Colin probably has a better idea on that, but if you think-
Wait just a second. I'm sorry to interrupt you. My name is Cody Hinson with the County Court of Law. We had a hearing scheduled in here, I just need to ask the bailiff to call a name real quick and see if anybody announces a present. Would you please call it in?
Jonathan Hurston, Jonathan Hurston, Jonathan Hurston.
Joshua.
That's crazy. Joshua Hurston.
All right, thank you very much, nobody's pressing. Sorry about that.
Okay. So, when these towers were, were built, basically imagine, take a small hose or a big hose. When you go from the repeater to the antenna at the top of the tower, and you put it through a smaller cable, it's only about, what, seven, eighth inch cable?
I'll tell you what, let's just stick to the, the amount of money requested, move on with the-
So looking at probably about sixty thousand for next year, just to be able to replace two for sure, and be able to repair or maintain any others that experienced catastrophic failure.
Okay. And these, these are specific to Burnet County, not part of the Western Region?
Yes, sir. These are the convention, these are just for the conventional repeater system that we took over from BCSA some years ago. The other thing that I would be asking for is another position. Basically, with the growth that is planned here in Burnet County, along with just the operations tempo that I've experienced over the last two years, and two and a half years, and the induced burnout from working, you know, fourteen to twenty-hour days with no relief, and even at times, what was it, so Eclipse last year was thirty-six hours, basically straight, with a two-hour nap in there. As recently as May twenty-eighth, that was a twenty-hour day with a three-hour nap, followed by more response efforts after I woke up from just basically passing out from fatigue in the middle of a monitoring after the severe storms knocked down ten power poles.
You submitted a document, the proposed position level, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And then-
And then, of course, there's the, probably about three thousand dollars worth of equipment for them to get them a new desk and new technology setup.
So, what I'm gonna do, commissioners, we have a meeting scheduled with the Western Towers folks on, I guess next week or-
Tomorrow, yes.
So, I think since that's a joint budget with multiple counties, I think we're just gonna set aside the, the Western Towers consideration at this time. Do you have anything else that you want to tell us about your budget, Marchio?
Basically, just when you think in consideration of the additional position-
Yeah.
Under the Office of Emergency Management, we have about ten major components. These are various plans, activities, and with those ten major components, they come with an additional twelve subcomponents as to different parts of that portfolio. And of course, that's on top of, that's not including anything that's response-related.
Right, like the power lines, the tornadoes and the-
Exactly.
Fire, on the, in the middle of the highway.
Like I said, I came on in twenty-twenty-three with the goal of making Burnet County the most resilient prepared rural county in the state of Texas, and I still want to hold myself to that goal.
Thank you very much. All right. Any questions, any public comment? All right.
Eric, you forgot your glasses.
Okay.
So the towers, we're gonna wait on?
Yeah, because we'll have the meeting, and then once the, once the judges meet, or the, the board, the board of Western Towers meets, and we can come back and talk about the Western Towers system. These other budgets, I, I don't have anything really viable, I think, you know, that it is, it is really important to, to support our local fire departments in these ways. in these ways. Kicked around different ideas. Okay, number fourteen, review and discuss the following fire department budget proposals for FY twenty-five, twenty-six. I know at least one of these fire departments is considering doing an ESD election and gathering signatures at this time. So I think what we need to do is just set this aside, and, and maybe a few Commissioners that have access to these fire chiefs and these programs, if there's any valid reason why they might wanna see increases, or if it's just something that the county has just contributed, we can, we can talk about that at another time, so. Just assess needs in your, in your precincts.
I would think that, depending on that election set for November, or will be in November.
That'll be the Hoover Valley one?
Yeah, but.
But that hasn't been gathered yet.
They're working on it.
Yeah, that was coming, it is not, we're not there yet, but we should get it any time.
But I'm just saying, I don't think, what we have historically done is budgeted this, this five thousand per volunteer fire department for common training. And I know one year they brought in, they call the Burning House, it's a trailer that they light on fire and show progression. I'm sure Commissioner Luther could tell us a whole lot more about it. Anyway, but we've also used it as a backup for the emergency command trailer, that if they don't use, utilize these funds for August one of each year, then we're able to use these funds to offset expenses for the emergency command trailer, whether it be maintenance, preventative maintenance for the trailer, or additional services that we can add to the trailer that help all the fire departments if it's deployed on, on an event. So, I think that's, that's the way we historically have used it, and I think it's, it's served us well.
Okay, good. Alright. The, uh, the other, the other items, I do, I do have the tourism budget, I don't know the tourism person here. We're seeing some overall, so I'll call, I'd like to skip fifteen and sixteen since the public, Department of Public Safety has not submitted anything. And the, uh, the health and welfare budget is just kind of a, it's just an assigned budget for the thing. So I'll just skip the number seventeen, review and discuss the county judge's budget proposal. As far as the county judge office, there's a, some, some increase for a court reporter, and then also bringing over the general counsel and professional services into this budget, 'cause right now it's, it's off in another, somewhere, somewhere else. And so I'm recommending that, uh, now, as this office has need to conduct its constitutional statutory judge authority, rather than having a full-time court reporter on site, it would just have to be, make arrangements for contract services. So on, on, on trial or, or dates like that. So that's, you see an increase there. There's a, I, I put in a consideration for a PIO officer. It, it's just one of the things that really hamstrings a lot of time in having a centralized PIO system. Would be very helpful to not only integrate the processes for multiple, like many of us have handled the same public information request. And so having that redundancy, each of us taking hours out of our schedule to, to find, to find the PIO, to, to secure the, meet, meet the statutory requirements under the Public Information Act, is, is very cumbersome for multiple officials, elected officials. And so the way it would work for elected officials is to, would set up a single process, and then elected officials could join, join that process through an inner, some sort of agreement we'll have to work through, county attorney, and if that's something that the Commissioners wanted to pursue. But it would centralize the requests so that the, the whole system would, would then be able to respond effectively and consistently. Just even the details of how some of these go down, it's, it's very interesting, because somebody had asked one of the Commissioners for certain records, that that Commissioner didn't have, the exact same request came to me, but I had the record, so then I had to, I had to, which, which is fine. I mean, I wanna give the information as quickly as possible, but it, it's just that, that nuance is just really hard to keep up with sometimes. So, anyway. Beyond that, I just kept everything with, for the, for the judge's office directly. For the tourism, I believe there's a slight increase, about fifteen percent increase, almost fifteen percent. A lot of that is because a lot of this budget does not make large allowances for some of the historical preservation projects that are beginning to fade away that were done in previous, out of previous tourism budgets. Now, that may not be something, I mean, I don't know what the status of BRICS is, if it really needs, or if that should be the priority for the tourism. But it, it, this budget does raise some of the market, one of the purposes of, of the tourism budget is to bring more people into Burnett County, staying in the hotels. And so I tried to address that with a little bit larger marketing budget. Collections is pretty much the same, slight increase in, in, in operating supplies and then some, but beyond that. And then Veteran Services is the last office in, in the, associated with the county judge office, is the, pretty much the same, some, a little bit more supplies and, and conference and training that's required. Are there any questions? Oh, and a little bit more in contract services for the vet, vet rides, for paid, paid truck.
Any public comments?
Sure, public comments?
Patty Cope. Okay, so I do have a question, number one. The PIO is a new position? That's a public information officer?
I'm, I'm telling them, just like the.
Okay, 'cause it's just not on the agenda, so I was curious about that. The tourism, how do we track the return on the, the performance of the tourism budget to the, how do we track it? What, what are the metrics, the performance metrics? It's just a question. And then the other one is Item C. I'm a power of attorney for several disabled veterans, and they would like to see our veteran services here in Burnett County have more hours, and also have higher visibility, maybe some outreach, some sort of outreach to the veterans, because there's a lot of veterans at the VFWs and other facilities in the county, and they're very unaware of, not unaware, but it's hard to get an appointment with the VSO. So that is a request from a couple of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Nope.
Okay. Take a motion to the Chair.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.